Could we all please rise for a moment's silence followed by last allegiance? And if we could keep in our minds our fellow colleague, Councilor Harnett, who is recovering from surgery. We wish this being recovery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, created in just one accord.
I'll take a motion to accept the February 23rd meetings, motion made second in favor saying aye to. We have no communications. Public hearings.
First, public hearing. Public hearing on a notice meant in the City of Lynn Zone ordinance regulating multi-family high-rise buildings in the WF1, WF2, WF3, WS and SHCO districts.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition wishing to speak to? Folks wishing to testify, if you'd like to speak, just come in line. And all we ask is that you state your name and address for the record. Floor is yours.
Hi, thanks. Good evening. My name is Jose Palma. I live on 476 Summer Street here in Lynn. I would like to start by reading an article from Lynn Item from June 17th. And this is what it says. This is from Housing and Economic Development Secretary Jay Pach told local business and political leader Tuesday before urging them to unify around Lynn's renewal. My number one priority is Lynn. You have tremendous leadership, but you need to get on the same page. Then he moved on and said, "The focus has to be on commercial development, on market rate housing. When you develop market rate housing, you are bringing in young people who are thinking about kids. They are thinking about nightlife and they are going out and telling everybody else." Then, I would like to move on to today's decision. Today's decision is saying, "If you want to build in Lynn, and if you want to build one bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, you are not obligated to provide off parking spaces." But yet, you are saying, "If you are going to build three-bedroom apartments, you have to provide three parking spaces." It sounds to me that that is pretty much following Mr. Pach's suggestion, which I believe this decision will affect many, many people in the city of Lynn. I don't believe it was enough conversation in the city of Lynn for this decision to be taken tonight. I was participating in the board meeting, in the planning board meeting, just a few minutes ago. And I asked how today's meeting was advertised. And it was the Lynn Item and maybe, and some online sources. That, the Lynn Item is a great newspaper in the city of Lynn, but it doesn't get to every resident in the city of Lynn. And I believe that tonight's decision to be postponed and have a conversation with the community and let's all get together and think about the future of the city of Lynn. I believe if the decision were to be made tonight, it is discriminatory to families with kids. It can motivate legal challenges, and I don't think it's the best decision for the city of Lynn. I believe the government should be welcome, but I also believe the community should be part of this decision. I would like to ask the city council today to postpone and have community conversations. And let's get together and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hugo Almeida. I live at 24th Street, Lynn, Mass. I just have a question. Who or what woke up one morning and decided to change his law? What are the benefits to the citizens, residents, current residents of Lynn? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Daraati Aria. I live on 51 Way View Avenue, Lynn, Mass. I have been Lynn resident for 27 years. I come here today before you to share some of my thought, our thought about the waterfront development along the Lynn Way. Our city is a blue collar city. It's very diverse, with many walks by and therefore, therefore, community. We come together and work so hard to build this city. The foundation of this city was put together by hard-working immigrant. We have so much pride in our hometown, city of Lynn. We feel that the local resident shall receive a maximum benefit of any new development coming, especially in the waterfront destruction project. The waterfront destruction project must allocate a big portion of the high-paying job to our locals. If the city willing to change for the benefit of the investor to make more money, we demand that the city make a change to benefit to our Lynn resident. We ask the city to take into consideration and acquire equal employment opportunity, participating regardless any federal, state, city, or private grant. The EEO clause must include hiring of local minority or small business, hiring of local women, minimum of 10%, hiring of local minority with a minimum of 20%, and number four is hiring union trade men. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delmar Fazales and I live in 11 Olive Street. And I've been living in Lynn for 20 years. And I was wondering, with this project, it's good for every, for the rich people, but what's going to happen to our families? What's going to happen when these people need to get kids, a little more elderly? What's going to happen? Thank you.
My name is Oscar Ross. I live in Olive Street. I love the American dream, but I also love development. Okay, it's okay. I've been in Lynn for 25, 30 years. And I see a lot of changes that are being taken place through today. But I also encourage the council to see that everybody get benefits from it, not only bigger investments, investors. But I also like to point that we need to see the lower-income people, the hard-working people, and also the immigrant and hard-working. So, I would like to ask the biggest investors to think about the benefit of the community of Lynn, the city idea. Thank you.
My name is Louise Fortune and I live at 386 Chestnut Street. Earlier, I heard that you have 19 meetings about this on development. I never heard anything about it. Is there a way we can take time, take a vote, and push back? Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Judel Calobera.
My name is Judel Tarr Rivera.
Vivo en el 24 de la Crin.
I live on 24 Trinity Ave.
Y estoy feliz de escuchar que se van a construir, o es la cosa humildad de que se van a construir apartamentos.
And I am happy that there is the opportunity, or maybe an opportunity, to build new apartments.
Pero quiero decirle que por favor piensen que nosotros las personas de bajo ingreso...
But I also want to that you not think about us, the low-income people.
Lo que tenemos hijos.
People that have kids.
Tengo muchas amistades y familia.
I have many friends and family.
Que viven dos y tres familias juntas en un solo apartamento.
That live one and two families in the same apartment?
Debido a lo cara que está la renta y lo poco apartamento que quieran vacío.
Due to how expensive the rent is right now and we don't have enough apartments in the city.
Y creo que esto es una muy buena oportunidad.
Can I take that this is a great opportunity?
Si, todo está muy accesible a la vivienda.
If everybody have access to those new houses.
Por favor, piensen en todo, que todos somos iguales, que todos tengamos accesibilidad a la vivienda que vamos a construir.
Please think about everybody and make sure everything is accessible to everybody in the city of Lynn.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. Isaac Simon Hoats, 28 Flint Street, Lynn. I want to first just say a few words about why it makes sense, in my view, to bring up this pretty wide range of issues. And we've heard about local hiring and what kind of jobs we'll get out of this. We've heard about the housing needs of the community broadly. And I think it's very true from my experience that there's a great need for affordable housing for lower-income people as well as middle-income people. And we've also heard about the need to integrate new development into the rest of the city so we don't end up with a sort of separate enclave that's only for very wealthy people. But that we sort of stay true to the character of what Lynn's about. It's a proudly blue-collar town that we're more integrated. We may have ways to go, but we're more integrated than a lot of places. But these issues might seem to stray a little bit from what's before you all, which is kind of nuts and bolts. This is about parking. This is about the retail space requirement. In my view, it's because these changes to the zoning ordinance don't just affect this one, or one first development, or I think there are probably two developments that people have in mind. These are changes to the ordinance that are, until you all do something else, they're permanent. And they're going to affect development going forward for many, many years. And I think we should be really clear about what these changes do. And earlier on, someone's asked the question, "Who woke up one morning and wanted these changes?" These are pretty esoteric changes, parking space requirements, the with, these things. And, you know, I don't think it's any secret. These changes are designed to facilitate development that particular companies will make a lot of money on. That's how development works in the system we have. And that is what it is. That's fine. And no one, certainly not myself, is saying we don't want development. I think everyone in this room could probably agree, if on nothing else, that, you know, the sort of way that the land behind the Walmart is right now is not the best use of that area. So, we all want development. The question in my mind is what kind of development? And that's why it makes sense when we're making these changes to think about the other implications. Because these changes are changes made by a public body that represents the general public of this city that will create private wealth, that'll enhance the ability of certain developers to make more money. And in my view, that's fine. That's how we push development forward. But that's exactly the time that we should talk about how can we make changes alongside these that benefit the broader public, that benefit the people who are living in Lynn now, and that make sure we address potential concerns that the development could cause. So, I think it's very much on topic to talk about these other issues. You know, there's certain changes that are needed, and this is the moment that we're going to talk about making them. And it's got to be a negotiation. We can't, you know, give away all the changes that, you know, developers want going into the indefinite future and then come back later and say, "Well, what about these, you know, potential changes that could benefit the public?" You know, the horse will kind of be out of the barn at that point. So, I think that's why folks feel like, you know, these other issues are very relevant. My concern is that, you know, we've sort of seen how this plays out in other cities. We've seen East Boston and Chelsea and Somerville. And in all of those cities, you know, when development first started, the idea was that no one wants to go there, and we've got to do whatever we can to get development coming in. And then, a few years later, you see in East Boston massive displacement of families that have lived in that community for decades, and massive displacement, also of more recent immigrants who were such a critical part of the fabric of that community. And I think that's sort of the default, that unless we really think it through and take other action, that's how development's been working in Massachusetts, in New York, you could go across the country, that, you know, it's driven by profit, and unless there's real care taken, it ends up being a process that reinforces segregation, both in terms of race and class, that it can often create sort of isolated communities that aren't really part of the city that they're being built in. So, I would really hate to see that happen in Lynn. And I think we're the city of first, and we should think about doing things that follow a different path, right, that have development, but development that doesn't cause displacement of existing residents. That we have development, but it's development that integrates with the rest of the city and reinforces the good things about Lynn. I think one important point is that this is not our last chance. You know, and I really sympathize with the efforts that have been going on for decades to bring us to this point. And I sympathize with the concern and the fear that, you know, this is the moment, and we've got to do what the developers need right now, because if we don't, this is going to slip through our fingers again like it is in the past, and we're going to end up with nothing. But I think this moment's different in really important ways than the situation 10, 20 years ago. The pressures that are driving developers to want to come to Lynn now are demographic shifts that are not going to reverse. There are just not that many places to build in Boston and in the adjacent communities. Lynn has got something, and I think we should have the confidence as a community that we're going to get this done. We are going to get development done. I have no doubt. But I think we have to have the confidence to say, "Let's take the time to have a community process and negotiate things." So that, yes, we give developers what they need to bring in the resources, to bring in the capital, to make things happen. But at the same time, not after, when they don't need the city council anymore, but right now, we negotiate things that'll be beneficial to the public good, the entire community, that'll make sure that we don't end up with further segregation, that'll make sure we don't exacerbate what's already a housing crisis, to make sure that we do have an integrated, mixed-income community. And I think we can do it. I think it's innovative. It's not the way it's been done necessarily in East Boston and other communities, but if you look at what people are saying now in East Boston, even there was a Boston Globe article where there was a quote from someone involved with the Boston Redevelopment Authority, where he said, "We didn't realize, you know, when we were making these plans in East Boston, where we'd be at today." And they wish now that they had paid more attention to, you know, what kind of affordability needs will there be going into the future. I think, you know, just very clearly, having some kind of mixed-income guidelines for development right now in Lynn would really not, in many cases, impact rent that much right now. You know, maybe if there are a small number of units for very low-income people, that would have an impact on the rents. But for moderate-income, mixed-use housing, that's not necessarily going to be that much lower than market. It's going to be a guarantee that going into the future, we don't end up with this sort of segregated, isolated area as rents to go up. So, I hope that you'll consider taking a little bit of time, having a little bit of a further process to think about while we have this unique moment that there's some leverage, that we have developers who need something from the city, we have the confidence to say, "Well, we want to talk about what we can do that wouldn't stop development, but would go along with development and allow some further public benefits." I really don't think this is, you know, this is the last chance. You know, if you go to buy a new car, that salesman's going to wonder if you think it's the last one on the lot, and you buy it now, or, you know, you can search the whole East Coast for that model and that color. And I just don't think that's the situation here. It may have been in the past, but, you know, we've got buildable area that's of great demand. There's a whole new sort of ballgame in terms of the demand for this kind of housing. And I think we have the chance to navigate this and build on what's been learned in these other cities where, you know, they do have even worse housing crises now. I mean, I love this city. I love its character, and I don't want to see us in 20 years wishing that, you know, we thought a little bit further into the future in seeing people who have been longtime Lynn residents, you know, families who really anchor this community getting priced out. Or, I also don't want to see Lynn losing its character as a welcoming home for newer immigrants, working-class people who can't afford other communities, and it really helped revitalize and build this city. You know, just like in East Boston, people got pushed out. We're going to end up with that same situation in Lynn, and that really scares me, that we lose, you know, something special about this city. So, I hope, you know, we can take the time to, you know, not delay this forever, not stop development, but have a community conversation and figure out how we can get some of these things alongside, you know, what the developers need. And just one sort of concrete example, I know that in addition to the parking, this proposal eliminates the requirement for retail space on the first floor in certain types of waterfront area developments that are very large. And that might make a lot of sense. I'm not saying I oppose that. But I think we need to consider, do we need to have something else in place in that requirement? And the reason is this. I understand that eliminating that requirement makes a building much more profitable. You know, that you can sell, you know, if you go by square foot, you know, putting apartments or condos on that first floor is going to make you more money than put a retail space. And that's fine. That might make sense. My concern is that a sort of extra benefit of having retail is that it means there's going to be more interaction. If you have retail space, by nature, that means the general public and folks from other neighborhoods in Lynn are going to be back and forth into that building. And once it becomes, you know, purely residential, particularly if it's all market rate and potentially all very high income going into the future, it creates, you know, almost the feel of a gated community. And that's not what Lynn's about. It has never been and it shouldn't be. So, maybe it makes sense to get rid of that retail requirement. But what other kind of measures might we take in terms of design guidelines, in terms of other uses, whether it's educational, whether it's other public use, that might take up just a small portion of the first floor? But what kind of uses, you know, should we ask for if we're not going to have the retail? And again, it's, you know, it's sort of the time to figure that out. Do it is now. You know, we could make this change, and, you know, it's off to the races. And any leverage we had to negotiate some public benefit is going to be lessened. So, I think now is the time to do it. And thank you for your time.
My name is John Confindberg. I live at 18th Hunter Street here in Lynn. I'd first of all like to thank everyone who's been involved in this process to bring development to the waterfront for your hard work, your commitment, and your enthusiasm in coming to this point. Lynn is a very proud city. I'm proud to be from the city. I'm sure you're all proud of your words and the city as a whole. And I'd like to humbly ask that we take a moment and elevate that pride to a point where we can really hold up public participation in these processes that determine the future of our city. With all due respect to Mr. Capella and everyone who's been involved in this process to this point, I know that there were a number of very well-attended meetings with the public in the process of developing the master plan for the waterfront. That master plan was published in 2007. In 2008, the housing market crashed nationally, creating a radically different landscape for development as well as for the future of our city and the security of the residents of the city, life long or new or otherwise. So, I'd like to take this moment to request that we try to insert some more public participation into this process. I learned today, for example, that site review, site review board meetings are technically public, but are not announced in public. I also learned that the meeting that was held today for the zoning board were, there were two announcements made in the Lynn Item in English only. This is a very diverse city. We speak a multitude of languages. That's something that is brought up over and over again in all of the proud pieces I read about Lynn and its strength and its diversity. So, I would like to just take a moment to reflect on the fact that when we only appeal to certain parts of our population, we only invite certain parts of our population into this public process, we're really doing a disservice to the strengths of this city. We're really doing a disservice to the possibility that we have with this waterfront development. So, I would like to request that we make public and announce publicly in multiple languages any meeting that pertains to development, including this parking process. The first I heard about this was the notice in the item, and it seemed like it was a done deal at that moment. And after attending the meeting earlier tonight, it was certainly a done deal by the time we got there. This is not showing pride in our community. This is not showing pride in the residents that elected you five people into the office and hold. And this is not going to show pride in how we move forward as a city and as a community. Thank you very much for your time.
David Gass, 150 Lynn Way. I live at Seaport Landing, and I've been here since the building was built 30 years ago. And I live on the first floor, which is fine. I'm not against this plan. The idea of bringing more housing is an excellent idea. As much housing as we can build in Lynn as you could for the city of Lynn. And I live on the first floor. It's a beautiful place to live. It has eight-and-a-half-foot parking spaces. I understand that concept too. That's very important for a developer, having been one. But my concern is this, is that you're giving something to a developer. It's almost like spot zoning, but it isn't, because it applies to many sites probably. But it's giving it to the developer before negotiating things in turn that you can get from the city, like was pointed out, the issue of a trade-off. We don't have linkage here, which happened in Boston, which raised $50 million for formal housing. But we should trade off and meet with the developers and ask them if we could put in conditions like Isaac was saying. It had to do with several things. First of all, this is a minority, majority of minority city. And observing the last $100 million in development in the city since this police station was built, I see very few minority workers and I see very few local Lynn workers. So, how do you get around that? You have to talk to the developer and negotiate something if you're trading off and giving them many more apartments. The fact is that in Seaport Landing, recently, a sale of a commercial spot brought in $180 a foot. Sale of residential on the first floor brought in $205 a foot. So, there's much more money in residential, and I support that idea. But I think you should table this whole issue until you can negotiate with the specific developer and ask him... developer and ask him to trade off several things. One is a fund that you would give, a donation that you would give, that would be for job training, and you'd hire these workers. And affordable housing, affordable housing has been cut nationally in half, so that Lynn Housing only gets half as much what it gets when, when you, this council supported our project on the industry, they only get half a million dollars, affordable housing, you cut funds where they should get a million one. So there's very pressing need for affordable housing money, and you could help with that. And you could help also with the idea of job training. And I would also suggest you raise the issue of, in a friendly way, with the developer, of hiring local people and putting a quota when they hire the general contractor, quota for local workers and a quota for minority workers.
Seth Albell, 7 Central Square. As someone who has spoken so often about making it easier for development in Lynn, I do feel a little funny standing in opposition, but I stand here because I do have some concerns and share some of the concerns that I've heard tonight. I'm not thrilled to hear today that the developer wants to eliminate retail space. We made that mistake downtown when we ignored the Market Street Vision Plan, a plan that not many people have heard of because I'm not sure it's seen the light of day in a long time. We're talking about improving public access to the waterfront, we're talking about linking the waterfront to the downtown, we've been talking about that for years. But now I'm a little bit worried that we are going to end up with an enclave, kind of a walled fortress, if you will, unto itself. I've seen developments like that, I would never live in one myself. As a double-income, no-kids family, living in a two-bedroom, I chose that lifestyle with the idea that I could go downstairs and walk to a shop. And I think it's short-sighted for the developer because that's a solid point that they're now not going to have. So they're stuck crossing the Linway, well, I don't mind them coming downtown, but I think losing retail is a mistake, and I think it sets a bad precedent for the rest of the development along the Linways. That'll inevitably happen, I believe it will. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition? If we'd like, folks who don't want to speak, if they'd like to raise their hands, if they're in opposition to the public hearing. You can see roughly about 35 folks. Thank you. I'm going to now open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in support.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Caudell. I'm, uh, excuse me, in charge of economic development for the city of Lynn. I'm a lifelong resident, born here, raised here, will die here. Very proud of our city. And the issue before you tonight, number one, was voted on unanimously in favor by the board tonight, so that happened. People that spoke talked about community involvement, I so strongly support that. When we came up with our vision of the waterfront, we held 19 public meetings, 19 public meetings. And we said to ourselves at these public meetings, what does the city of Lynn want for its waterfront? And it was very clear that in the past, very poor decisions were made. I mean, we have the only Walmart, that if you stood on the roof, you'd have a beautiful view of the Atlantic Ocean, you have fast-food restaurants, you have auto dealership. We can and we will do better than that. And that's what those 19 public meetings really turned up, was a vision for the city of Lynn. And it was the waterfront master plan was developed so that it would guide the city not for one year or two years, but for two to three decades. That's our vision. So tonight, the zoning changes that we support, it will allow for the Beacon Site to be developed. Now, that Beacon Site has been vacant for almost 30 years. 20,000 cars pass there on a daily basis, they look at that lot of land, and they say, "Why isn't that being developed?" Tonight, we have an investment group that is ready to invest $80 million onto that site. It will create 350 residential units. And all due expect to the people who spoke, Lynn, and a report is coming out in the next couple of weeks from the Housing Authority, will show that the city of Lynn, anybody want to take a guess at our percentage of affordable housing? That report will show we're at 35%. We have done our fair share. I don't know of any city in the Commonwealth that has 35% affordable housing. We support affordable housing. But this project will be 350 residential units, they will all be market rate. There will be a border that will connect from the Heritage State Park to behind this development, to behind Catacuzine, to Lynn Community Ferry Center. You will be able to go down there with your family and enjoy that open area, which hasn't been opened in my lifetime. It will produce, on an annual basis, $1.3 million in taxes that will be utilized for our schools, for our public safety, for our DPW, et cetera. $1.3 million on an annual basis. This really and truly is the first development since we passed that vision to come forward and say, "We believe in your vision, we want to invest here in Lynn, we agree with your vision." The council has been a partner in this from the very beginning, from all of those 19 public meetings that we've had, working with, I don't want to start naming the councils, but all those public meetings that were attended by the City Council and supported. Secretary Ash, and gentlemen started reading the paper, 100% correct. Secretary Ash said the future to Lynn starts with market rate, and house, we agree wholeheartedly with him. This is a culmination of a lot of hard work, I hope and strongly support this proposal. Site plan review made up by myself and my department, and Charlie Gator, and Jamie Mash, and Bob Stig, and others strongly support this, we respectfully ask that you do as well. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. Eric Loaf, 231 Sutton Street, North Andover. I'm one of the proponents of the Beacon Development Site. I may not be able to speak as eloquently as Isaac or Jim just did, now I was making notes as a staff, if I jump around a little, I apologize. But I appreciate the opportunity to at least mention a couple of things. I really do believe in what Jim said, our, I can echo what the other residents said as well, we have housing crisis in the state, we need more housing.
Point of information, is this four?
This is his favor.
Public hearing, four.
This is the portion in favor, yeah. This is the portion in favor, yes, thank you. Sorry, continue. Sure, thank you. Yeah, we, oh, no problem, thank you. We need more housing. I know there are something like 20,000 families that are living in hotel rooms around the state. We have a huge housing problem. If you look at downtown Boston, and what a lot of the, or tonight, is everybody's concerned about, you know, rents running up in Boston, and then coming out across East Boston, through Raffie, or out here, that's absolutely happening. Part of the problem is, there's so little land in Boston, and it's so difficult to permit things, and the construction costs are so high that prices keep going up and up. My feeling is, any housing you build is good housing, whether it's expensive or cheap, because what happens if, when we have the next housing bust? When apartments are $6,000 a month in Boston, you know, a year or two later, they'll be $3,000 a month, and the ones that were $3,000 a month in East Boston will be $2,000, and there's a ripple effect. You know, to say that we won't miss the opportunity here in Lynn, I don't think is true, but we've seen it happen before. My office is in North Andover, right next to Lawrence, which is a somewhat similar situation to Lynn, but doesn't have all the benefits of being closer to Boston, the waterfront, some of the manufacturing base that's still here because so many people stayed, a lot more people left Lawrence. What happens every time the economy really gets cranked up, you get a bunch of people like me, other developers, go, "Boy, it's this great opportunity, this is lucky land, let's go in, it's a good backbone to the city." And you go through and maybe run to a few roadblocks here and there, and all of a sudden the market starts rolling over, and all of a sudden you can't do it anymore. We don't want that to happen here, I agree, maybe there's a shift that's happening and that will carry it through. But I think if you can get, if you can get some housing built, it'll be a good thing, because all the housing that we build will be new, energy-efficient, healthy, you know, it won't be 100-year-old housing stuff like we have in a lot of the state, in these triple-deckers, and a lot of them need to be rehabbed, because you're spending way too much money for heat, you're spending way too much money for electricity, it's not healthy for kids. So new housing is certainly good for them. There's been a lot of talk about the retail. Frankly, we're agnostic as to whether there's retail there or not. We'd love to see retail work, we just don't really think it can. We've built a lot of retail, CBS, Dolphin Shops, bank branches, all sorts of things. The only retail we really think would work there is drive-through-oriented retail, you see the Dunkin' Donuts, the fast-food shops. So for us to achieve that, it wouldn't really fit in on the site. That being said, we've set aside some room for a retail-type usage, we actually spoke with a credit union that's interested in going there, because we would like to have the corner of the building where you come in enlightened, we want people coming in there. So where, you know, where the intersection is right now from downtown Lynn coming into the Beacon Site, that's going to be the intersection coming into our property. And there'll be some parking spaces where you can access the state park and the walkway and everything. So we'd love to see some retail, but in everybody we've spoken with and in our experience, we just don't really think it'll work. If we can make it work, we'd love to have it, we don't want to have empty storefronts, because I don't think Lynn needs empty storefronts. It wouldn't help us, obviously. As far as the parking goes, whether we do a nine-foot-wide spot or eight-and-a-half-foot wide spot, it's not a huge deal, it helps us, it helps us add some more parking in. I was mentioning to one of the people I spoke with before, one of our partners that we did, one of our providers with, manages about 12,000 or 13,000 apartment units. And if they're in the suburbs, they want to see 1.75 to 2 parking spaces per unit, doesn't matter if they're ones, twos, or threes, it's a blended rate. If you're in the city core, you might even go to half a space, or if you're in New York, they won't even let you build any parking. So we're somewhere in the middle, we're not in the suburbs, we're not downtown. We think the minimum we want to get away with is one spot, we're proposing 1.3 parking spaces per unit, it's mostly one- to two-bedroom units. In the past, we've built plenty of 40B projects in North Andover, Newbury Court, different places, and we've been close to 1.75 spaces, because there wasn't access to the rail station, you didn't have the ferry, you didn't have the bus lines. So we're comfortable with that number of parking, whether it's eight-and-a-half-foot wide or nine-foot wide, and really, it's a business risk for us, we don't have enough parking spaces, people aren't going to want to live there, we're going to lose money. So we've done a fair amount of research on that, but comfortable with that number. It's, you know, it's based on something. And I guess, one last, or two last things. One, someone mentioned hiring local people, whether those unions, we typically entitle and develop, we're not general contractors, we'll hire general contractors, so I don't know the answer to those questions yet. But the more local people that's involved, the better, and it's, that's good for us, that's good for everybody. And then, I can't speak for any of the other sites along the Lynn, or any of the other developers, but I know that the Beacon Site is a difficult site, I mean, that's part of the reason why it's sat for so long. It had pollution on it, it still has an AOL. So to develop that site, you either have to cap the entire site and bring in three feet of fresh fill, and if you're digging out, you have to have soil management in place. I mean, all these things are, they're not technically difficult, but they're very expensive. I mean, to put three feet of clean fill all over the entire site is a huge expense. Along the shore, there was at one point a revamp, like you see at the Heritage State Park, a nice boat for it, and it's basically all gone along the Beacon Site, so that needs to be rebuilt, that's probably a million dollars she was. And then, at the end of the day, we're looking at it and saying, we love Lynn, if you go out there to the back of the site, and you look at the water, just like you do, you're sitting on top of a wall, it's beautiful, you can be anywhere, it's a beautiful, beautiful site, but we're still covering it under the fact that it's Lynn, it's all its strengths and it's proximized to Boston, there's still only so much ramp we think we can get, and we don't even know what that number is, because anything new that's comparable, that's been built in Lynn for a long time, so we're scratching our heads, and our research guys are going, "Well, there's this project in Salem that we're building." I said, "Okay, but Salem's not Lynn." "Well, what about Revere?" "Revere's not Lynn." So it's really difficult to pin down what we think we can do in Lynn. So I know in Cambridge, when we built the projects, you think you can get $3.50 per square foot, a thousand square foot, you know, it might be $3,500 a month, which is a lot of money. In Revere, they're getting between $2,500 and $3,000 a month, $250 to $3 a square foot. In North Andover, we're doing a project now, we're thinking we can get $2.15 a square foot. In Lynn, I think, we'll probably shoot for $1.80 to $1.90 a square foot, you know, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, you know, depends a little bit. But if those numbers are much lower than that, we really can't afford to build. Now, this project that we're proposing right now, we're looking at, for the building that's closest to the Linway, it'd be two levels of parking, one would be down a little bit, one would be out about five or six feet, then five stories of housing, because that's as high as you can go in wood under the building code in Massachusetts. Because to go to a steel-framed building, you just can't afford to do it, everything's so expensive these days. So although you see a big project going up, saying, "Gee, they're going to make that money", we hope to, but it could go the other way too, because there's only, we don't think there's a ton of margin here. We think it's a great opportunity, and if the market keeps going in the right direction and, you know, people want to come here, like Secretary Ash is saying, young people, hopefully people that live here already are going to move in here, and then there'll be some new blood moving in here, and they'll spend money in the businesses downtown, it's a great opportunity. But that margin is, you know, is kind of tight, so I understand why people are saying, "You should ask for things," but at the same time, there's only so much we can give, because it's a large risk. If you went to downtown Welling and said you're going to build 100 units of housing, like, wouldn't matter, what happened, how much you spent, it'd make tons of money. Coming to a place like Lynn, despite all the great things about it, is still taking a big risk. So we have to be careful of what we can, what we can promise with all we've worked in a very collaborative manner. We've built hundreds of units through the 40B process, so we've built a lot of affordable housing, most of it at 80% of median income. I think Isaac was right, that that median income is fairly close to what market rate is here right now. But like Jim said, you've done an incredible job with your affordable housing already, you know, to have some other opportunities for people, to really mix the community, I think would be a wonderful thing. But anyways, thank you for your time and your consideration and so forth. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council? Councilor Lozey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm.
Is there a motion, councillor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve, and second, discussion.
I'll just swear to the councillor that the project would be in your board.
Right. So I just want to make a few comments here. I'm going to support moving forward with this. I know a lot of time and effort has gone in to bring a development here, and I've been in all those meetings, you know, over the years, and, you know, sort of encouraged development there, and to have been involved getting us to this point. But I do share some of the concerns of some of the people that spoke, and I have a lot of respect for the people that spoke here, and, you know, some of them are friends of mine. So I think that some of the issues that were brought up do, are worth for us to have some sort of forum where some dialogue could be achieved, you know? And I know there's a housing market study being done on Lynn right now, and I would just like to suggest here that we schedule a meeting, you know, and, with the Housing Committee, the Economic Development Committee, or the City Council, or both, and allow, you know, for some of this dialogue to take place, you know? And I also agree, you know, maybe we could do a better job, we definitely could do a better job at some of the public notices, so people are aware, you know? So just some points there. So I would like to propose that we do do that, that we do schedule a meeting, so some of these, people have a place where they can discuss some of these issues and come to some resolutions maybe at some point. But the dialogue, there has to be a forum for dialogue somewhere.
I'll take that in form of a friendly motion, and before, agreed with, seconded by Councilor Lozey, to refer this matter to Chairwoman Chakoudis's committee, which is Housing and Elder Affairs.
committee, which is Housing and Elder Affairs. All those in favor of referring such a matter to the committee for further discussion, say aye.
Aye.
I always know the ayes have it. So that will be scheduled through Madam Chairwoman for an immediate meeting with residents in conjunction with councillor Papano. On the underlying matter, do you yield to councillor Seer?
I don't even know where to begin. I agree with a lot of things that was said here tonight, but I also take a look at the opportunity Lynn has. 25, 30 years ago, Lynn was an industrial city where it provided tens of thousands of jobs in factories, which were responsible for hundreds of thousands of jobs that supported the people of Lynn. And I look at the development of the Linway as Lynn's new industry, to be perfectly honest with you, which will provide jobs for everybody who lives here. I also look at it that this is an $80 million project, and this is just one project, and there could be 20 and 30 projects of this size or even bigger along the Linway. So we're talking tens of billions of dollars, if not hundreds of billions of dollars, being invested into the Linway, which would bring in tens of millions of dollars' worth of jobs. A lot of the things I was saying here tonight was how is Lynn going to benefit? That's how Lynn will benefit. It was also said that Lynn's a blue collar city. I've lived here my entire life. I've worked in the GE, I've owned businesses, as many of the councillors here have. I've worked in the city, and I worked in Mayor McManus's office when Beacon Chevrolet was first acquired by the group that owned it, and it's has sat vacant for almost 30 years, as Mr. Cowdell said. I sympathize with a lot of things that the group that got up and spoke in opposition of it, but we've been here for 50 years and longer about developing the Linway. All the time, there's roadblocks that are put up to prevent that. We actually have a real opportunity to stop that development tonight. I agree with councillor Papano's statement that we should have more dialogue, and we should better notify the public, but the gentleman said earlier that there are so many different minority groups in the city, and a lot of people don't speak and don't understand English. There are many ways that we can communicate with the public, and we're not doing a good enough job at that. But I really believe that this is our opportunity to stop development, to stop a new industry in Lynn, and that new industry in Lynn is the Linway. It's a huge opportunity that I can't say is passing up. And every single person who will sit here tonight and have a spoke, I guarantee you they will all benefit from that. And the way you benefit from it is by the jobs that will create for each and every single one of us. There are some people sitting here that I know used to work in the GE, and the jobs that the GE provided were good-paying jobs. But Lynn has lost all those jobs. That's why we have the housing problem that we have instead. Here is our opportunity to do something about it. Instead of taking this as a negative, taking this a positive. Please, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, councillor Seer. Councillor Lozey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been a councillor for over 12 years, and many good people in this state, my colleagues, Jim Cowdell, others in the city, along with the numerous public hearings that we've had over the last several years regarding the waterfront development. This is exciting, and to hear that one phase of a very large portion of our waterfront is going to finally come to fruition. And I think we, you know, unfortunately, for a lot of good people that spoke tonight, as my colleague said, we respect what you said, we understand where you're coming from, but the facts speak for themselves. Lynn is already an affordable housing community. It would never... We don't have to worry about 40B. We have well over the required affordable housing. We've heard a lot of good things. We're close to Boston. We have a lot going for us. We have to, we can't afford to be indecisive. We need to move forward with this. The market will dictate what will work, and if there are developers willing to do this, perform this kind of work at $80 million of investment, I don't think we should be standing in the way. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I'm excited to see it move forward. Along with any additional input that we can have for the remaining waterfront. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Lozey. Any other discussion? Councillor LaPierre?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend folks who stood up and spoke this evening. Your comments do not go without notice. I would just add to what my colleagues have already stated, and I don't want to overstate the matter, but I think Lynn is on the verge with the $80 million project, and all I've heard about, you know, been running for office across the city, was how do we expand our tax base? And I think the figure was somewhere around $1.3 million in new investment for the city of Lynn. It's new revenues coming in. It's important to have revenues. And to go along with that, I'm also sensitive to the needs of other communities, and we don't want to see folks priced out of a housing market, for sure. I think councillor Lozey's statement of the 30-plus percent of affordable housing speaks to itself. We do our fair share here, we do more than our fair share. And when we look at the design, and when we look at the investment, this is a well-thought-out, smart building design, economically friendly, very viable along the waterfront. We will have an opportunity to go forward and develop Lynn in the right way that you may speak of or that you may favor by way of linkage and things like community benefits. But we are not Boston yet. We cannot command those leverage requirements. But down the road, there are possibilities to do so. And all we can ask is that our developers take care of our Lynn folks, put them to work for you, pay them a decent wage, and be good neighbors. And I think that's all that this council wants, and that's all that our Lynn community would like. And we want to see a wonderful development that's state-of-the-art and not a vacant land that I've seen my whole life. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor LaPierre. Any other discussion? Councillor Far?
Mr. President, there's nothing but good things that can come out of this affordable.
Could I have one, could I possibly have a few motions, councillor Far? I apologize, but I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can. There's no objection for me speaking from the chair, no objection. I'd just again like to thank the folks who came up to testify in support and opposition of this. This is part of the democratic process, and your voices are heard, and we do take into consideration everyone's viewpoints. This is a private development. Now, I say that because we've done many public developments. And when I say a public development, I mean ones that we utilize tax incentives. Two come to mind, the Market Basket and the Lower Washington Street Development. And there's a difference between the two. When you're dealing with a public development, there are, there is, to use a word, leverage that the city can use. And in fact, in those projects, because we're giving tax incentives, there are obligations and bogies that developers need to hit to make sure that they hire locally, they use local work. And in conjunction with the Lower Washington, they're going to be using labor, unionized labor, to do those, that project, and they're also going to have a large component of affordable housing. So we do have a commitment when we do public projects to use our leverage to make sure that the needs of the community are met. Now, we're talking about a private development. The zoning that has been put in place for many years now is by white zoning. The developer has come to us today for minor changes. We could reject the minor changes, and this building will be built with as much leverage as we have today, which is very little to none. What we're trying to do is set a tone to developers who want to invest $80 million to $90 million for them to invest.